It's yours, sir.
Good morning, everybody. My name is George Morland. Welcome. The time is nine oh three AM. I'm going to call this regular term meeting. B County Commissioners Court for Order, today is number two. Prayer, if everybody would please stand. Commissioner Buddy is going to lead us in a prayer.
Watch over this court and all that we do here. We ask you to watch over the decisions that we make to make sure that we do the best decisions possible for our constituents. And please keep us safe from this COVID. And watch over all of the military that's out there during these holiday seasons. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner.
Please join in celebration of the state of America and the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible. And the Texas flag, on our Texas flag, a flag of allegiance to the United States. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Man, this is really becoming a problem. I don't know what I'm getting. I've got a mental block. I stumbled last week or last time we had a meeting with the pledge because I was thinking about something while I was reciting it. Well, it was, we were leading up to that same moment in time from the last time we had a meeting. My mind once again wandered to the, I wonder what it was that I forgot. What is it? Undivisible, indivi... My apologies. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Recognition of Visitors. Do we have any visitors in the audience that would like to identify themselves? This isn't public comments. This is just, hey, my name's John Doe and I'm here. So is there anybody that'd like to do that, but you're not too? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lisa Baker. I am the General Manager at Skidmore Water Supply.
Hi, Ms. Baker. Thank you for being here this morning. And yes, sir.
I'm Tina Olivares. I'm here to support Lisa today.
Thank you, Mr. Olivares, for coming this morning. Is there anybody else? Okay.
I'm back. Celebrating my birthday here in B County.
Hey, happy birthday. Yeah, how could you go to a place to spend a few hours on my birthday? Making that great decision. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five. Excering for opening remarks. I believe we're on Commissioner Lenny this week.
It is. It is. Thank you. Kind of a quiet week. We got with Robbie Guerrero, had some Ross Dewitt issues here in town and got him on that taking care of that issue. We cleaned up some corporate credit again, did some loan beatings, whatnot. Ray, thanks to Ray for taking care of stuff, letting me know when they're doing the brush pickup and whatnot, like let the constituents know about it. And then also, I talked to the SO. We, Robbie, the environmental officer, when he goes out, picks up illegal dumping, if he finds a letter, address, or anything like that, he usually sends up three letters to that person. So he'll send a letter and he waits so many days and he'll send another letter certified. And then send another letter, you know, copy out to JP at that precinct, the judge myself or whichever commissioners in the precinct. And it takes like thirty days to finally do all that stuff. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna stop doing that. Got permission to, if he finds a letter, address, or anything, he's gonna go straight to the JP in that precinct and give them the offense and what it is. And that JP will then summons that person to come in and find them or whatever they're gonna do to them. So hopefully that will help stop a lot of this as well. Other than that, everything has been pretty quiet.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is good information.
You're sure to it? Yes, I have several things. One of them could put some money into your pockets, if you will. And this is one of those things that you need to do on a periodic basis personally. And I'm speaking to the constituents of B County. Go to the Texas Unclaimed Property website. Put in your last name and see what happens. Put in your address. I did it this weekend for some friends and some acquaintances and found one individual that had about $10,000 worth of unclaimed property sitting in Austin waiting for somebody to claim. So I highly recommend, when you get home, go to Texas Comptroller Unclaimed Property. One person I sent it to said, well, it's just a scam. I said, no, it's not a scam. It's a comptroller's office. And the reason I started doing it, my wife and I have a few dollars taken out every month to buy stocks on a regular basis. Well, I got a letter from a company with our joint tenant and all this kind of stuff. It looked official. I thought it was a scam. Well, when I called the company that was taking money out, they said, yeah, you haven't made any contact with us over five years and we're getting ready to send all your stock to the unclaimed property in Austin. I said, well, wait a minute. They said, when people don't contact them, they think maybe they're deceased or they moved or whatever. And it happens a lot with deposits for San Patricia Electric or AEP. You may have gotten a refund for your insurance or whatever. Or you have a bank account you forgot about. Are you the executor of an estate? And if you're an executor or an executor of an estate, check that name in an unclaimed property. You'll need certain documents to access it. And depending on how much money you have in there, sometimes you can do it simply with your driver's license and proof of identity. Sometimes you have to pass that. But I would recommend to everyone to immediately, when you get home tonight, go to Texas Unclaimed Property and Comptroller's Office and check. Now, I didn't check B County. We may have something there for B County. I don't know.
We do our unclaimed property annually.
Okay. So do it at least once a year. Anyway, a couple of things I met with. Because of redistricting, we are going to be in a different congressional district out of Washington. And our new representative was a gentleman named Michael Cloud. We had a meeting in Goliad a week or so ago to meet Mr. Cloud, Congressman Cloud. Well, he was tied up in meetings in Washington, but his Chief of Staff and his District Director were there out of Victoria and Washington, respectively. And we look forward to working with Congressman Cloud. Senator Kochhurst was also there. We met with her. She's the one that authored the elections bill that we've subscribed to. She is a fantastic lady and we look forward to working with her in the future. She's not our representative, but she was there to answer questions on some other things that were going on. There were probably seventy or eighty people there, police, sheriffs, rangers, parks and law. I was fortunate enough to be invited to have been there also. I've given the information to the Commissioners Court on our new representative. And I would recommend that the county judge's office possibly contact Mr. Mark Longoria, the District Director in Victoria, I'm sorry, in Corpus, and ask them to come so we can meet and greet. So I think that was a great idea. The other thing we've got going on, a couple of things I want to say that in government, time is your friend. But it depends on which side of time you're on. It can be your enemy. And also, government, when the window is open, you need to go through it. I'm glad that Skidmore is here. They're looking for a water tank and the window is open right now. So you always need to go through it with government. We're gonna be having our ARP meeting, our American Rescue Thing meeting later. There's some pretty exciting things going on and I will withhold that information till we get to that activity and keep you on the edge of your chair. So on that note, I will pass to my Commissioner to let...
Pretty busy week last week with the ambulance building still. We're coming to a couple of points, stopping points, because we're waiting on ARP stuff. So that's on hold, but if you haven't gone by it, it'll take a little progress. I think the Commissioners have stopped by already, they'll see already. Road and Bridge. Mr. Ray, thank you so much for Jeff Smith Road, clearing the, fixing the edges on and everything. I've already had about three or four calls and they appreciate that. You know, they're roding away on the site and they're crewing an outstanding job with that. So, true to them. Thank you. Meeting with the lady at the BDA for the lift station. They are getting with the contractor to provide all the particulars that are required for ARP. We're gonna deliver that sometime, I think tomorrow, the next week. So we've got that going on. And Greco worked on the air conditioning again last week. They have a couple of additions in it and they got it there and they were working on it. You got a result?
Yes.
And that's, that was my week last week. Pretty busy. I'll pass it to Commissioner Hackett.
Thank you, Commissioner. Had a, Mike Willow and I had a meeting with the Council of the Governments. We had a Zoom meeting with one of the representatives on some projects there in South Beach County. One being, as most of y'all heard, Silver Creek. The bridge that we're trying to propose in Silver Creek. Also interjected, possibly adding some larger concrete coves to 628. That has two low water crossings in there that generally flood over pretty well when it rains. And also, I have one on the back burner that I'm kind of pushing as hard as I can, which is, most of you Commissioners know, a Tony Circle. Been a huge issue for a long, long time. Been through several Commissioners. And I think right now the GLO has some funds for that. So we'd be pushing all three of those issues. I want to give a shout out, one to Ray. Again, Ray seems to be the man of the hour today. Little issue there at the school district in Skidmore. Drainage, little small drainage, I think has been overlooked for many, many months by the school and by us, of course. Was by there the other day. They were clearing the ditch to get the water to run. Mr. Ramos, I believe he works for the school district, contacted me. I contacted Ray and Ray contacted him. They now have asked to where the water will run out of the school district and down where it needs to go. So it was looking really good. Ray is piling up dirt all over the county and cleaning the ditches and I appreciate that. I want to also thank the Soto family, Soto and Christina Soto and their family. They have taken it upon themselves, with the exception that this last Sunday, every Sunday they have gone down 628 and picked up twelve, thirteen, fourteen bags of trash. They haven't even finished 628. I expect to see them this Sunday, this maybe this Sunday they took off. They pick up, they just walk the road, pick it up, send it out, pick it up. And I guess they take it to our collection and I'm not sure where it's at. And I'll take it in for them. They continue to do it themselves. Generally do it on a Sunday in the mornings when it's cool. So may have run this Sunday there to see if they weren't there. But there's just a small section left to finish cleaning it up. And then I guess mowers are headed. And that's one of the things, they're trying to beat the cove. Because once they, and the state does it all the time, and then they spend more money. I'm not sure most of you know, there's about $4 million a year of your state budget is spent on just picking up trash on the road. That's what they spend. Everybody's at post, then has to pick up the trash afterwards. And I Googled it out, about $40 million a year. So, $40 million and $1,000,000. And he's the one that asked me to cut my phone off.
And lunch provided.
Yeah, lunch, sir.
Barbecue, sir.
Anyway, I just wanted to give you that little information. Other than that, been talking to the kids in Skidmore. I did contact Ms. Baker last week. I hope you enjoy your vacation this weekend. But, and requested some information and of course she's sent it to us and she's here today. So she'll answer your question. Talking to the Tyne and War Board, they're still working through some issues there. Been a very busy week. Home been ringing and we're taking care of everything that's going on. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen, for all of your updates. Substantive and informative. I don't see any reason to derail the focus away from them. So I have no opening remarks this week. Just keep up the good work and thanks to all our county employees, elected officials and department heads for continuing to work diligently as we close out 2021 because we're almost there. I know that the auditor doesn't mind too much because of our hard work. You can't hear me? Nobody can hear me. I'm not gonna repeat what I said, but it was beautiful. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment. Is there any member of the public that would wish to address Commissioners Court at this time? Baker, we can thank you when we get to our ARP meeting.
I just have something to say.
Absolutely. You can actually, you know what, you can do it seated, but you're gonna have to actually, no stand up so we can show the video.
I'm just loud, sir. No one's ever said they couldn't hear me.
And identify yourself for the record before you start speaking, Ms. Baker.
Okay. My name is Lisa Baker. Is that all I have to say?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, this is my first time here. I just want you Commissioners to know, I know it's a fairly thankless job and I know that most people only call you to complain. So I just want to say that we are very grateful for the job that you do, whether everyone says it or not. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And we love comments like that. Do we have any other public comments this morning? I don't know how anybody could be bad. Give anyone the attention. Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Seven. Following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or county judge.
Who to approve is presented? Second with a comment.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Commissioner, quit.
I have, there's one item of change in status I think that we need to clarify. It's on Eli Ramirez. They're showing proposed hours, 783, but it should be 4603. Let me just give that to the auditor. It just wasn't, take me to the up line. Is that correct, ma'am?
Yeah, I mean, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's fine.
It's very kind. I hate for it to go through and accidentally be put in there that way.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What was it? Should be 4603.
This number here should be... Uh, I got you. The, that's the, it's just the...
It's just in the wrong, right. It's in the wrong...
The clothing allowance. That's correct. Got you.
No big deal.
Any further discussion? Anything else we need to look at, this case, too?
No, sir. Yes.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. We're here. We're ready. Agenda Item Number Eight, Approve and Accept Co-File's Donation of Commemorative Shadow Box Display for the B County Clerk's Historical Record Books. Ms. Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Uh, yes. You can get that, Kathy.
And welcome back, Ms. Dray. Good to see you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I do want to write off Lisa's comment, too. I think that y'all have the best for Commissioners Court. Y'all are so much fun. And it's so nice to see everybody get along and have the same goal in mind.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Got it. All right. Mikel Parkinson, B County Clerk. I have Kathy Dray from Co-File Technologies. Today, they're donating the shadow box to the Commissioners Court and to my office. I also have another one and that is the second book. But let me get Kathy to come up here so she could do her thing.
Sure. Again, I'm Kathy Dray with Co-File Technologies and we specialize in services and modernization projects for county government, specifically the clerk's office. So I'll just read from this letter. Co-File Technologies has pleased to donate this commemorative shadow box display for the B County Clerk's historical records book. This framed display emphasizes the important investment B County has made to ensure the survival of B's records. The original volume cover is mounted on blackboard, black matted board, cased in archival glass and framed in a handsome dark wood. This may be wall mounted in a visible public area to maximize exposure, providing the citizens of B County with an example of the significance of preserving and protecting these critical government records. A professional display of this book cover will demonstrate B County's commitment to ensuring the integrity of its permanent retention and historical records for future generations. So just a little bit about this volume. I really liked this because at some point, a county clerk put this sign on it that says, please handle with care. Because the book was actually falling apart, the pages were falling out of the book. These pages that were in the book are called a transcribed deed record. And back in the day, these are all records when B County was formed out of its sovereignty from Refugio County, Oasis County. There was Goliad County. All these other counties had land records that B was born out of. So somebody had to take a book, get on a horse, ride to these other counties and sit down and go through their books and transcribe what was in their book to the deed record A here. So this is from 1855. It's the oldest record. The history was falling apart. The pages were being eaten up by acids. So this is a preservation project that we did for deed record A and B. And again, the county clerk has deed record B in her office. So congratulations for protecting and preserving your history of your county. I do have an update that wasn't on the agenda, but I think it's also good news. So back in August of 2020, the judge, thank you so much, signed a contract with Co-File Technology to take existing images and reimage historical volumes that the images were just not good enough to work with. We took this project, we created, we grouped them all together, all the documents associated with the county clerk's land records, marriage records and Commissioner Court records, all these historical records. We grouped them into documents and indexed the land records by volume and page. We indexed the Commissioner Court minutes volumes by volume and page. And the marriage records, we indexed them by the volume and page of the marriage book. So what we were able to do then is we were able to take all of these documents, about thousand volumes of records, and put them in the county clerk's land and vital system. So now the county's real property records are imaged from present day all the way back to sovereignty to 1855. They're all in her land records. A huge accomplishment for the county clerk's office. This contract was signed on August 10th of 2020. The project has been completed. The project totaled $366,113. The county, with the auditor's help, devised a three-year payment plan where the county clerk could pay for this project over three years. There's no interest or fees or anything associated with that. We came in under budget by $25,880 and 80 cents. The county clerk is already paid for year one, is in the process of paying for year two. So year three invoice will be less $25,880. So not only were we able to image all of her land records all the way back to sovereignty, Commissioner Court minutes as well and her marriage records, we were able to do this and come in under budget. So I want to congratulate the county clerk's office. I want to thank the Commissioners Court, your honor, for the privilege of doing business with B County. And thank you so much.
We thank you.
Don't be a stranger. Come back anytime.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Let's do prove and accept. You've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception.
Judge, we may have a place here. The one to go down here.
I think the clock needs to be moved someplace.
Yep. We'll move everything. Except for the security camera. Watch it. Did I, did I take a vote?
Yes, sir.
Did I say motion passes without exception?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Affirmative on that.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Good to be here. And, ma'am, thank you for being here. Agenda Item Number Nine, Approve Jansen, Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement and settlement term sheet. There was a, this Commissioners, this Agenda Packet component was pretty large. It had the overall settlement agreement, terms. There's also, Commissioner, we had a letter from our attorneys in this that say that under the settlement agreement, the partial settlement agreement associated with the large opioid litigation, which the state of Texas and most counties and large municipalities are a part of. This partial settlement is with, it's Johnson and Johnson, right? Would entitle B County to a direct payment of $25,761. And then our regional healthcare, our healthcare region, which our county is one of multiple counties, would be entitled to receive somewhere around $0.1 million in additional healthcare needs on a region-wide basis to entities and organizations that help combat and fight the opioid epidemic in our nation. The recommendation of our attorneys is that we approve the settlement agreement and move forward. Yeah, I'd entertain a motion at that time. I have a motion and a second. Commissioner, what do you have for the floor, sir?
Comment? This is more good news. I think today is gonna be a good news day for Commissioners Court. Anytime we're getting money back or saving money, that's an outstanding thing, especially for the taxpayers. So if I remember correctly, some months ago, we had some individuals come to this court and tell us about this agreement. And we entered into an agreement with them to utilize us, if you will, as part of their litigation. And this is...
Excellent. Yeah, that's a good job. Appreciate me. Anything else? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Ten, Approve Request to Fill Vacancy on the Krista Spahn Board. We do appoint some members to the Advisory Committee, a local Advisory Committee to Krista Spahn Beville. We have a recommendation and I would nominate Cheryl Whitworth. I spoke with Ms. Whitworth a few days ago and confirmed that she did, in fact, agree to the appointment. I personally think she'd be a wonderful addition to that Advisory Board. And I'd love to give her the opportunity to assist the community.
Judge, I would second that with a comment.
Thank you. You've got a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none. Yeah.
I also know Ms. Whitworth personally. Her ranch is near ours and I think it's an excellent addition to the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Dray. Well, I'd entertain a motion. Did I, did I?
You did.
Oh.
All right, sir. I'll show you where your car is whenever...
I don't even know what to say. I'm so slow right now. All right. Thank you. It's time to vote, sir. Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. I think I'm a robot and I'm on the switch. I gotta figure it out. These are stairs. I need to plug back in.
Are you sure? Are you sure you hit the deer with your car?
I don't know. Maybe it's all just been a big dream. You're gonna have to go for about a three-hour break. I'll come back. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Approve B County appraisal district's proposed budget amendment. Just in general, this is a relation to 2019 budget surplus. They requested to amend their budget to retain that surplus for the purpose of continuing, the continuing litigation surrounding valuation of large pieces of industrial equipment.
I'm going to approve.
You've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. All right, now we're gonna cook this gas. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Approve Actual Request for Pavilion and Auditorium fee waivers from the AgriLife Extension Office for their Tri-County Hay Show on November 5, 2021, and Tri-County Continuing Education Units Day on December 16, 2021.
Is it approved?
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any presentation or... I've got a motion in a second, is there any presentation or? Mr. Gulick, let us know a little bit about what the Tri-County Hay Show is.
Sure, we had it past Friday. I partnered with Goliad and Refugio County, that's our little tri-county area. We had it at the expo, it went really well, we had about 20 participants. Um, we had them all submit hay tackle. Um, we did it off a relative feed value, how we scored them, and we gave out some nice awards to those participants. And then December 16th, we're doing our five-hour CU day. Those CUs are for pesticide applicators, so they can continue to get their 15 hours. So they license are up for renewal, they can renew with the Texas Department of Ag. And then another thing, I don't have it with me yet, but I'll get it to y'all as soon as possible. But that, December 16th is the County Commissioners Court Conference that Mr. Montemayor closes up in Etna. Um, as soon as I get that information flyer this week, I'll send it to you guys. So I just wanted to mention that date for y'all. And I know y'all have CU hours y'all have to get to maintain y'all's hours. So, well, thank y'all and thank you for the support.
Thank you, Mr. Gulick. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 13, approved expo request for auditorium fee waiver from the First Baptist Church Parent Teacher Fellowship for the annual auction on May 21, 2022. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Mr. Rutter, you guys get up and see for us?
No, um, I, I definitely, I suggest that we look forward with it, this is a return event. We do have a deposit on file, um, and so they've done it before. They did have a stip last year because of COVID. But, um, that's great for the kids, I mean, they're, they're raising funding for, um, for their church, for their children, and for equipment.
Excellent, there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 14, approved expo request for meeting room fee. Oh, wait, um, is this the one? Pass in, am I, pass on this? Okay, we're gonna pass on this agenda item, uh, it'll come up later, uh, agenda potentially. Agenda item number 15, approved expo request for pavilion fee waiver from the Texas Department of Criminal Justice McCallum for Christmas meal box registration on November 16, 2021, and distribution on December 21st, 2021.
Move to approve, second.
I've got a motion and a second, further discussion? Uh, Wally, would you mind just sharing with the community a little bit about what this is and, and?
Absolutely, Judge. Good morning, Judge. Commissioner's Court, Wally Rodriguez, um, commercial director, B County head post there. Um, so that's defense, is a new one, but it's a great one. Um, we do have TDCJ here with us, I just want to mention to you guys that, you know, we have a wonderful relationship with TDCJ. In the past, they've come out to the ground, they've helped us out. We just kind of ask for the help, and as long as, you know, circumstances allow, they extend their, their hand, and they help us in many different capacities. But we do have representatives of TDCJ here today to kind of share with us in detail. Um, they've come across the wonderful project, um, and they've been working with the, um, what is the entity?
Catholic Charities and Purpose Christi.
Catholic Charities and Purpose Christi. And so these guys, um, have partnered together to provide free meals that'll be available, I believe it's 200 mil, mil boxes. They're gonna be ready to go for the community. There's gonna be a registration, um, set for this, so families will register as needed um, on the first date, and then the second date would involve distribution. Um, they would be handling everything entirely, they'd be in the pavilion area. We have some firm availability for them, so that is good to go. Um, and my recommendation is that we move forward with the waiver considering that it is something that's gonna benefit the community entirely.
It sounds great, um, and I apologize, I didn't recognize y'all sitting there initially. Would you like to address Commissioners Court? We'd love to know who you are at the very least.
Oh, we just wanted to, uh, my name is Officer Boynton, I'm the ACA coordinator for the McConnell unit. Um, we just wanted to let, um, the B County residents know that we've partnered up with the Catholic Charities of Purpose Christi. Um, they are providing all of the boxes and the food donations, and we are providing some muscle to get it out to the community. They're gonna provide us with enough for 200 families. Um, the only requirement is that they be a resident of B County, and we're just requesting one Christmas box, is what they're called, per family. And so it's to provide a Christmas meal for families of B County.
Wonderful, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you ladies for being here this morning. Agenda item number 16, approved safety and security light at the intersection of Highway 39 and Old Houston Highway for the safety of school bus students. Commissioner Fadias, this is your agenda item, you have the floor.
It was brought to my attention by not only just the owner of the road and bridge, but also several concerned citizens. During this last month, we had some pretty foggy days, the warnings couldn't see. So I went out there myself, and I missed the intersection. I couldn't see it, on 59 and Old Houston Highway. If that comes away, that you can't see it. So we need a light there to, uh, also add to the lights that we've been putting in. Kind of got it done as a part, but I need, you know, some safety issues there. And now the days are getting shorter, so we'll do that, add that on there.
Do we have a poll nearby?
There's a, there's a poll there.
We've got your motion, too?
Yes, sir, it is.
I will second that.
We've got a motion in a second, further discussion?
Uh, is it AB or is it?
AB.
Oh, I'm all for that.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to say, I know that Commissioner Liddy has been kind of behind the, the ball here, and he has said that he's been wanting to bring it before the court. And I think that it's time to be thinking about this one. Cause we've kind of held off for a while.
I don't know that that's necessarily a blank check, but I'm interested.
Yeah, a list.
I'll get my list.
Yeah, all right.
I'll fill in my paper.
No, that's okay, we have funds available.
We didn't talk about that during budget, we had to increase the budget um, for ones that, um, from last year that we were catching up on, so.
This one, is there, is there an installation cost?
Sometimes.
On some of them there is, on some of them there's not. Sometimes they'll get there, and they've already got a transformer there, they'll just stick it up. I think the last one I did on Fender was almost, it wasn't.
It's just a rear end cost, it costs electricity.
Right, cause it, it depends, sometimes there is, sometimes.
Sometimes you get lucky enough that you don't, you don't get a, a charge for that transformer. Sometimes they can hook up rest of my pole. This one has free to choose from, so I'll get a roll and see which one's the most efficient to the county.
And Judge, the reason I asked about the pole, uh, when we put the one at the Coliseum, we did have to put a pole there at the entrance, and it pretty much was lost.
Yes, sir.
And we were kind of hesitant to do that.
No, I understand that.
Unless it's absolutely necessary.
And Commissioner, you might go ahead and get that listed together quickly. Get what Mrs. Cantu can do, and figure out if we can get a better idea.
We sat there last year, almost $20,000 a year.
Yeah, we went over budget last year.
Yeah.
We want to stay under budget, but we didn't budget for these at all, so we're gonna. You can fix that for us, Mrs. Cantu, thank you so much.
Whatever you need, Judge.
Yeah, that's right. Maybe.
Yes.
I have one. Okay, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Uh, and it goes without saying, thanks for bringing us to our attention. Agenda item number 17, approved resolution submitting border prosecution grant application to the office of the governor.
Move to approve, second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 18, approved use of county debit card for risk management conference registration for the auditor's office and emergency management department. Mrs. Cantu, do you have a presentation?
Um, yes, with this, with this risk management, um, conference that both my office and risk management will be going to, um, this resort is, will take $169 for each night out of your account until we send the check in. And so, um, that's why I'm requesting to use the debit card early. Cause we, I, I've dealt with this in other departments that didn't do this before because of time constraints, but we have enough time to do this. So send the check, and then it'll be reimbursed to the, to the card.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sorry, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mrs. Cantu. Agenda item number 19, approved 2022 Texas Association of Counties auto liability insurance renewal starting January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022.
Move to approve, comment, second.
I have a motion in a second, Commissioner, uh, do it, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, on page 219. Uh, we're looking at the auto schedule renewal as far as constable. And there's one deputy constable listed, and my question is, where are the other deputy constables? Because we're liable probably their vehicles and their services to B County. Do we need to add them?
Um, I believe constables was a question that we had out, and I believe we got our answer to it.
Well, we're asking who the deputy constables are, but this is our, our latest insurance. And if, uh.
No, we, we know who our deputy constables are.
My discovery by the policy.
We don't, unfortunately, we don't, we're trying to find out who they are.
Well, we had a few that weren't on our list that we let judges often know about.
We don't know who they are. The court doesn't know.
Okay, um.
But see, we've got one deputy constable and four constables listed. And I'm, I'm, my question is, what about the other deputy constables? Uh, should they be listed here for liability insurance?
Well, they are, they are listed. Um, now, as far as if they're not on here.
I'm not seeing them on this today. For insurance purposes.
And I don't have, I don't have those names right off.
219.
Uh-huh, um, it's a woman, there's a, there's a woman.
Right, but they're not.
I understand.
What reason are you thinking about? All of them, one, one group.
Two is, is one of them, I know.
All of them.
All of them don't have deputy constables, it's just two and.
One.
One and two?
One has deputy constable.
One and two.
Well, I know that one of them has three or four.
One and two.
None of them are listed.
It's one and two.
You don't.
That's yours. Uh, our chief deputy has some information to put.
It's a little relevant, you're talking about insurance. What, God, talking about deputy constables, those nine papers, some reserves. Uh, we have 11 reserves, they're not filled, all of them. But I want to say we pay on yearly, we pay an interest on 11.
Hey, so see, this is, this is specifically this, our Association of Counties, and what we're paying per year. For one, this one deputy constable paying $115 for their auto liability insurance, which I, I'm okay with that. But are there other deputy constables that should be on this list?
That's what Veronica confirmed, and she confirmed, and she found that there was extra deputy constables that we weren't aware of, and so we brought it to the.
But, so they're not on the list? But they're not on the list.
I can get that list for you, I don't have it right now.
Well, they need to go on the insurance list.
It, it, well, she, she has it on the insurance, so I'm not sure why it's not coming up, but I will find out.
Well, if, if we put this, can we go back and, and pull that and track them throughout the policy year?
Um, I don't know throughout the policy year, but as far as right now, um, I mean, those names should be attached, cause we did cover, we did cover that.
We have time?
Yes, sir.
That we can get this straight?
Yes, sir.
I'd entertain a motion to table this agenda item, and so we can get this straight now. Got a motion to table that, second? Motion in a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And one other thing, uh, looking down the list, I go back to the time when I worked with state taxes on property. Uh, I'm like, who, who is our property manager? Who does the property?
Veronica.
Veronica, okay, I see a lot of vehicles here, probably 70, 80, or 90 vehicles. I was asked that Veronica go and put her finger on everyone, be sure they're all still here.
The department, um, extending the list. Uh, the department sometimes are not as timely as we need them to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, but we do do that annually, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're sure, cause there's vehicles, I, I'm not surprised there's that many. Uh, maybe some of them are sitting in the yard, need to be sold or something.
And, and those cannot go off of insurance until they're sold.
Okay, that's probably gonna.
Yes, it's that, and, and yet, that's what the sheriff's office.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
All those opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 25, November 2, 2020. This is Warren, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners Judge Laura Warren, we're electing the administrator. I have the Kansas for November 2 election in the form of, at least at this point, cause we have submitted.
Excellent, what, uh, how did the election go?
Great.
How was our voter turnout?
That was good, uh, it was worth it, the governor turnout, but we, we hit 5%.
5% of the voting population in the county.
Unfortunately, that was way below 2019, but it has the Beville IFC collection stand.
Yes, ma'am.
And in B County, just, just so you know, in B County. Yes, all one package.
Okay.
In B County, uh, all the physicians, uh, in B County. All, all of them.
That's all right, we'll just do it all.
I didn't need a signature on that.
Thank you.
Do we need, is this actually, we need to prove.
Yes, sir.
Is there a formal?
I gave you the form that needs to be signed, and then if I can get a signature on the front page.
There's right there. Motion to approve the comments that was presented by Ms. Warren. How's that going?
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. I'll go ahead and execute this Kansas general election now. You may need to re-paginate the paperwork, we did our, we cut some mine. It's like an elementary school project.
The, the boss back told me all I need was.
And we gave it to our. Oh, yeah.
And a hard space there, I'll get it started.
We know it was organized until we got the precinct commissioner.
Page one on the front, that's all that matters. It doesn't matter which one, I can have a picture.
Okay.
There you go.
Precinct one, precinct two. Thank you, Ms. Warren, and thank you for all of your efforts and the efforts of your office on another civil election. And to all of our voters, come on, vote, man!
March 1st, primary.
Oh, you have that, that.
Moving on to agenda item number 21, American Rescue Plan, ARP Status and Projects. Commissioner Fadias, you have the floor.
We've gotten to the exciting part of this. Anytime you're dealing with millions of dollars, it's exciting. And we have several things for the court to think about. We have two individuals, or two physicians, who we did the essential worker pay that had contacted me and the committee and said, you know, we'd like consideration if possible, and I want to bring it before the court, so we can take it to our consultants for a final decision. It is the extension office physician and the physician of Coliseum manager. The extension office, the county provides the stipend for the extension office agent, and the Coliseum is under contract. We do not know for sure whether they are covered under the essential worker fund. The committee decided that we were not going to make that final decision. We understand there may be a carve-out, if you will, in the regulations. So what I would recommend and ask the court, and I'll make a motion if we can go through these individuals, that we shift both of those physicians to our consultant for a final decision on essential worker pay.
Got a motion in a second?
Uh, I have a second with an amendment to that.
Okay, you have the floor then.
Uh, and, and I don't have a problem with taking all of this and giving it to our consultants. Um, but I, I would, I would like to add that they sign off on it before they bring it back to your committee, and then you bring it back to us.
Well, I, I will remind you, sir, that the last Commissioner's Court meeting, that's what we decided to do, we would bring it to you to get through before we went to the consultant.
I, I understand, but.
But you want to do the opposite.
No, it doesn't matter, you bring it to us.
That's what we're doing.
But before we ask, I guess you're right, I'm going the other way.
One more step beyond.
I want to go one more step, I want them to approve it.
We are.
Then it can even go there.
Right, we wanted approval from the court to take it to them, and then we'll know what they say.
And then they'll sign off on it.
Or say no, that's correct.
That's fine, that's, that's what I'm asking. If, if we lay it out to them, they look at it, and they officially sign off on it before it's brought back to y'all.
That is, that's what we're doing.
Before it's executed.
That's exactly what we're doing.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
Uh, yes.
Because we're all on the same page.
All on the same page.
We don't want to waste time taking something to them if we know we're not...
I agree with that, quarter. And I, I thought, I brought that up the last court meeting, that, that what we said.
Certainly. So, um, I think I'm okay, I'm okay with the motion in a second as, as...
As per...
Our consultant?
And they'll sign off on it.
And they'll say yes or no, and we'll let you on it.
And they'll sign off on it before we say that.
Right, and that's what we've done everything so far.
Okay, what's next?
Okay, another thing we need, uh, in our committee, uh, the consultant needs to know Mike Willow's retirement date because they're saying we need a cutoff date on the, uh, COVID manager salary. And it's my understanding he's going to retire, and he has yet to provide that date to us. Uh, do you have that for us?
I need it out of six right now, but as soon as he's back, I will double check with him on a Thursday, he can hook up with this break.
Okay, because the consultants need that, and we need that to allocate the amount of money.
Isn't it just for the entire fiscal year, or can it be longer than the fiscal year?
It can be longer than the fiscal year, yes, and that's what they need.
That's what they need.
And, um, and also will, uh, will we keep the position and hire once Mr. Willow does retire? That's another question.
And I guess that's really the real question that we need to ask more so than, like, how long do we need the position, right?
Yes, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna extend the position beyond his employment.
I wouldn't have thought to be there.
Well, the fund board, we got it to twenty twenty-four. But do we need the position with COVID dispaid? That's going to be the question.
Yeah, that's a really interesting question.
The court has answered that question.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to take a time, and, okay.
And, and I think we start by getting his retirement date, and we can work backwards from that, because I think it's, I think it's February, I think.
I'll talk, I'll, I'll talk to, or, or you can just get us that number.
Okay, uh, let's see, we've got several things. We're working, the court approved several items previously, and those items have gone forward to the consultants. They have approved them. They're working to work out some, uh, justification details with the sheriff's office on several. The P O's are pending, final, final okay from the consultants. So that, everything the court had approved before is going forward. Uh, a lot of it is from sole source, like the body scanner, the mobile data, one thing and another, it's sole source, but they need that information, and, and our chief deputy is getting that to the auditor's office to get this done. So that's in the works. Uh, we have, uh, our emergency management coordinator here today. He has sketched out an emergency management building. Uh, who, who is, is our, our, our building renovation manager for the court, for the county, and he's working on that E O C building now. And, uh, Mr. Gordon, I have some information that he's presented to court that, uh, uh, we can take a look at. Basically, it's the old ambulance building, adding about forty-two feet to the end of it. There's a beautiful picture, and you've done a good job. Uh, would you like to address the court?
Sure. Uh, Brian Gardner, emergency management director. On the, uh, first page, you can see that's the current sketch of how the Justice Center was initially laid out to when it was initially built. Um, so a lot of that space, I know it's been said that, you know, adding on to that other building is, of course, has been wise. We're kind of planning for the future. If we're gonna move into something, we would like to be able to stay there for the next fifteen, twenty years and not have to worry about trying to expand in a later day. Um, so on the second page, there's a list of current location breakdowns, strength of media, E S, E M C office, communications room. So our office has our communications room. We have a tower on the roof of the Justice Center that provides radio communications for our, not only law enforcement type radios, but also our cam radios that are used during emergencies. Then we have the outside area, which is the E O C area, where all of our tables are set up to God's scene. Uh, there's twenty-four suits out there currently, twenty-five with my own chairs I bring to the party. But there's been times where we've out, kind of outgrew that area. So planning for the future to be able to have more people. Um, we have a small storage area at the top of the stairwell where we keep, uh, some filing cabinets and some other items that we use. Then you have, uh, where it says storage area can sling two people. Derek Harvey, they have cop setup in those rooms, and there's a list of all of them to have, how many people can fit inside it. Typically, we could swing about fourteen to sixteen people upstairs a week. Um, we also have a shower and a handicap restroom, Melanthema shower, I mean, sorry, Melanthema restroom. Um, on the third page, which has that sketch of the Justice Center that I use Google Pro on, just to give you an idea of what, what space we're taking up. Um, on the fourth page, which is going to be the new, or the ambulance building, the existing building, reason we're asking for forty-two feet of extension by thirty-two feet is to allow to have an actual E O C area separated, have a little room that has a patient's room in it, and then there's a, uh, location that says equipment room. We've talked about also turning that into some type of medical room or vaccination room. And then, uh, relocation of a radio tower on the outside exterior of that building. And then on the old part that is pre-existing in the ambulance building, uh, we have two offices listed, a breakout room, which will allow during an emergency activation to have planning or whoever else needs to separate from the actual operational portion of the E O C to be able to go into there and have a quiet area for them to get a game plan together of what our next steps are going to be. And then you see there's a little area, it's a sleeping area, kind of important that off just to have a quiet space for people to go in and rest or relax or to, uh, decompress if they need to. And then there's a list of a storage area that we'd like to see, a shower, Melanthema restroom, kitchen area, and then the main entrance. Then where it says parking up at the top of the page, that's where that cupboard area is currently. We'd like to see that knocked down and turned into like some type of parking area for people that are coming in. Um, then the next page has electrical outlets meeting. It has breakdown of all the equipment that we currently have in our E O C now and the types of things that we will need in the new facility. And then the second, or I'm sorry, the picture of the outlets, that's the outlets that are in the floor in the E O C currently. We'd like to see that building have the same type of setup with the outlets. Makes it easier, less tripping hazards. Instead of hanging wires from the roof or running extension cords, we have floor, like, probably have to raise the floor a few inches just to be able to accommodate that. And then the last section of, uh, literature that I provided, that's current regulations for A D A compliance for bath, bathrooms and restrooms. Um, you know, handlebars and all that other good stuff that goes into a handicap accessible restroom. And if anybody needs further documentation, I have a whole book of A D A compliance in my office, I'm more than happy to share.
It's just a proposal we have. Just, just, if, if we were to wave a magic wand and say, okay, golly bum, we can do this, is this what you need?
Currently...
In other words, wait a minute, is this what you need?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the, that's possible.
Yes.
Uh, we have, uh, A R P money we're looking at, and another avenue that may open itself up, uh, uh, to us.
Yes.
Do you research any grants that are available to E O C?
We are looking at one currently for a FEMA dome. I have talked to Judge briefly about it the other day. I think that's a better option that we could explore, to have a FEMA dome built. I know that there's grants that are part of it, and it covers a good majority of it, but the county would have to come up with a portion. Um, but other grants, we could definitely look into that.
All right. I talked to, to Judge, from Tampa County, they tried for the FEMA dome, and they're twice as busy as us and more populated than us. So they're, they're already scratched that plan for the FEMA dome, so they're not, they're not trying for that anymore.
Well, I think, I didn't know the Superior County tried also.
And they didn't get it.
They didn't get it because Woodford already got it.
See, the more we're out there and don't get them, the better chance we have. That's what we have to look at. Look, I have a question for the court. If, if Merlin the magician were involved, which he may get involved here in six or eight weeks, and we had the money to do this, can the court do this, or do we need to get an engineer and architect? If we did this, I'm not asking the court, I'm asking the court, please, please. If we did this, we could do this in three to four months. If we get an engineer and architect, we're looking at a year and a half, probably two years. And this is something to think about. Nothing I want any, just, just be thinking about it. You're looking at adding on about forty feet. Uh, there is a religious group that probably will tear down the old buildings, the next to it stores for the salvage material. Road breaks can put in the, uh, the paving if we pay for the materials. Something to think about. This can be up in operation before the next hurricane season. Just, just something to think about. That's all.
Dollar amount that's required to get engineers to come in.
Yes, twenty thousand is what we've been told by our third party in there.
Stand with a group, especially for E O C, because you all have more requirements than just a regular commercial building. That's almost like building a hospital building or something. That's all I'm saying, but, uh, because like the level five, uh, uh, consultants that we use at times, I'm sure would be happy to, to work on it. I, I, we can get a hold of whoever. Just, just be thinking about the different ways we can do this to expedite because the building's ours, the land's ours, uh, Merlin's going to come, magic may happen. Okay?
Currently, we're almost exhausted with the money that, that they're going to come funding with the insurance, so.
And that's where we're about, we're about done with that. Commissioner Pitts and I were talking the other day, it needs a, a, a gable roof, and several things need to be done. But he's at a point where he can stop, and it's, it's secure, it's protected, and it's not insecure. While we're deciding exactly what we want to do next one. And, and keep in mind that behind that building, all the way to Flanders Street, my community affairs belongs to B County. And there's nothing but a, a springing fence from the old jail back there, and that fence can be taken down, that part of it, in a driveway involved with by crews. Any other comments, Madam? Commissioner Hager, your, your defense thoughts are...
No, no, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Okay.
I mean, these are, this is a, a pretty big wish list.
Yeah.
I mean, even if we scratch some of these off your wish list, it would look...
Let, let me, let me interrupt. If we have a chance to do this right, and we only have one chance to do this, let's do it right the first time, not come back in three years and say, golly bum, I wish we'd done this. Not to say that it's going to be exactly like this, because we get an architect, engineer involved, they may say, well, no, this needs to be this or this. But I would rather start out way over here than starting out down here in five years and, man, we should have done this, we should have done that. Because if, if, if we get this done, especially if we're using money out of a big bucket, we should do it right the first time.
No, I don't have a problem. I just want to make sure that we're on solid ground and use the money. I, I don't want it to come back, and then all of a sudden, we're having to do a lot of transfer requests or pull from reserves to pay back some money that we should have, no, Reese or Tom, or that, that, on grant work, so.
Okay.
If they come back and they send an email to the court and to the judge and say, hey, this has been approved, you know, a hundred percent, and you're on solid ground, I have no problem, but I'm looking for more.
I'm, I'm agree, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Pittis. That's why I made that comment. As long as Grantwood puts their name on the bottom of that proposal that they give back to you as a committee, I got no problems with it. But that, that truth clear.
I'm not...
Well, Merlin, 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 come, he's coming. Just, just hang tight. I'll tell you when to put the seatbelt on.
I don't know.
I tell you, no, it's, it's past secret squirrel, it's decomp free information. Anyway, whatever. Let's go to Skidmore.
I'll die when you leave the building.
Yes. You have to sign it before you say... Commissioner Hager, uh, brought to the court several months ago, or several weeks ago, that Skidmore needed four hundred fifty thousand dollar money. He asked for additional information. Ms. Lisa Baker's here. I think she's supplying that to the court. Where we, it seems like we may have two options to, to take this to our consultant. One of them is that the county somehow becomes the manager of the project. The second option is that the money is granted directly to Skidmore. Y'all are totally responsible. But before we can do either one, the information you've given us today, Ms. Grace, will send to our consultant, and let them look it up and see if it's sufficient to move forward. And, and, and the committee felt like that instead of B County being responsible for the project, if the money were granted directly to Skidmore, Skidmore would be totally responsible. In other words, if something messes up, Skidmore would have to repay it. That's the way we're, we're, we're approaching it. And this information that you've given us today, we really appreciate. And Madam Moss, you be sure that Ms. Grace gets this and gives it to our consultant. Do you have anything you'd like to say, just maybe?
I want to say that. Sorry about that. Um, to clarify, we don't need four hundred fifty thousand dollars to cover the water tank. Um, that project is actually two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, what we are desperate for are generators at our business. Um, I don't know how familiar you are with lift stations.
This is the first we've heard this. We've heard water tank.
There's, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what information, because I didn't give y'all that today. That was a long time ago, but I, I'm not sure what's there. So, anyway, um, I did send some generator proposals and things of that nature along. To have power to run a lift station. Um, we were able to keep the water on all the time by working eighteen-hour days every single day. But lift stations were a whole different story. So if you have water, you have sewer. Well, if you don't have power, you can't move that sewer to your treatment plant. So we are desperate for generators for those lift stations because we... Nobody could get here because the roads were closed and frozen. Um, I realize this may not again, but it sure could. Um, and so there are, everything that I sent is... And I've been begging for years. I took over this place two and a half years ago, I guess. Um, terrible, 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 terrible shape, not only financially, but it's an old system, and so it's, it's running on one leg, it should be before. Um, but I've been begging and begging and begging and begging and begging. I've been begging Grantwood, I've been looking at Grant, I've been, I mean, I'm really trying to do all my homework, um, and I am kind of new at all this stuff. Was a mom for eighteen years before I got a job. Um, not sure what I was thinking. Anyway, so, um, but yes, everything, I'm not sure what I said. I, I just don't know what's in your package, I'm sorry. Um, but...
Did you provide a package?
Some time ago, yes, like...
It's September ten.
It's November.
I know, that's, that's the date.
That's the package that was sent in.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, yeah. I, I wish it was ten, I'm sorry, because I pressed the number one. Um, but, um, I mean, any, I had not heard that further information was needed. Um, I've got a book right here. Um, I'm pretty prepared because I've been getting bids and whatnot. So, I mean, if there's ever a question at all, I would call me, because, uh, I have everything readily available. So, anyway, I just wanted to clarify that the water tank, we're building a new water tank, and we have to repair the other one. That's where all this money is going into that.
Do you have a generator, or you were looking at?
We need three generators.
Okay.
Two things you have to...
We have a generator at our water plant, and we have a generator at our sewer plant. We have no generators at the lift station.
Ms. Baker, we're going to have a meeting directly after this with our committee. We'd like to ask you to stay and we can talk.
You'd like...
What I would recommend to the court, I'll make a motion, we move forward with the project at Skidmore, to send everything to our consultants and get a feed, get some final feedback from them. I'll make that motion in a second.
Got a motion in a second, further discussion?
No, I just, I just want to emphasize that, yeah, when I brought this to Ms. Baker's attention, I, we were discussing the water tank. Because you don't have to flush the tank. It runs out all over the place. And you said you were already looking at one. And I said, be sure you put whatever you need in there.
Yeah.
And then this is the package that you sent to Gray, sent to me and to Gray.
Okay, yeah.
And so thi- this was sent to the auditor's office. Now, whether it made it out of the office to the committee, I can't answer. I just do know that, that, that's what we discussed.
We'll get it all sorted out.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing down all this, favorably indicated by saying aye, all opposed? Motion passes without exception. Potential A R P?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have one, Commissioner Lenny has some, some, uh, projects at the Coliseum. That, uh, I'll be ready to support, uh, the commission's work.
No, not yet. Need to get some bids on that, and also waiting on the, uh, I have a guy going with a generator at the old staff office. And, uh, he's supposed to email me some, uh, a report as to what all it's going to take to get it. I think he, we talked to him last week, and he said he was willing to fire it up, and then it ran for so long, it died. And so he was going to go through and see what he needed to do to get it running, kind of stay running.
What do you think about, still want to move it over to the... That was, since...
In April, last, about a year and a half, it was like a hundred thousand.
And once you're on the... Open the batteries, we did, so...
Was this switch? The switch needs to be replaced.
She said all the knee bones are there, just little things to get it back to the subject. I think that's a big...
Transfer switch, a good transfer box?
And I think you said the radiator was...
That's the one I gave him on the okay to...
Radiator, oh, that was the combat.
We don't know what's in the works, and they don't give us...
They're listening to all that. I'm waiting for David to give me the email back to him, report.
Excellent. One thing that we looked at, and it's an ongoing situation, is the, uh, uh, revenue loss calculation reimbursed to B County. I made a statement at the last commission corporate, first one we talked about, that the year's going to be leased to college, but we're sure it could be more than that. Uh, it's in the works. Uh, it's in the works. Uh, that's the DEFCON three information we cannot release, but it's looking really good. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Oss, it's looking really good?
Uh, for the report that, uh, Grace had to, uh, submit, it, it, and I was told not to show the information until, um, Grant Works got a chance to look at it, uh, which is D D. And I have not heard back about that.
A little unrestricted, unrestricted. Unrestricted, huh?
Those would be unrestricted.
They would not.
That would be for our use. And, and they would be for our use, not under the requirements of this, these, uh, art money.
Art money, those.
It would be separate. It would be then under us. It would go to our revenue stream and not be able to spend.
I believe.
They issued some final interim rubens or some other, certain, like we did, didn't they let some restrictions on the calculation?
That's what, that's what I, that's what I heard, yes, sir. That's what, that's what I heard, yeah.
Except for the, the thousand, hundred.
Really, just, just keep, keep in mind that, that, let's say we get ten dollars back, that's ten dollars out of that six, something maybe. It's gonna come out of that money, but it will go into our bucket.
Yeah.
Into, and if you will, into Merlin's bucket.
Oh, Merlin's.
Merlin, Merlin's bucket.
How, how long does it take to get a response back from Grant Works to say, yes, so?
They're working, oh, we, we can't push them. They're, they're working.
No, it'll take a week, two weeks, a month.
Depends. That's a terrible word that's used, they depend. They're working on it. Soon. We really want to know on this one.
I know they, I, I know they've, uh, seen to that. Uh, I know Natalie, uh, with Grant Works has signed additional resources, Suby County, uh, the offices are committing.
Yes.
Their case of submitting to this project, and I think this is all about.
And, uh, we, we have an option to meet with our new person, Zoom, in person, and we, we want in person. And the public, you know, they're welcome to come. We can't really have another member of the commission court, there's two of them, it's violation of the open means act. But, uh, we breathe everybody as much as we can. Uh, committee members, what have I forgotten? Uh, Chief Deputy?
What I did see on, um, on Mr. Garza's little template there was, uh, kind of reminiscent of a COVID trailer.
Yeah, I didn't have nothing, because that picture doesn't get on deck, there's a little turnaround areas in the back.
Okay.
We're talking about knocking out to put straight shut through. We may have to rethings where we want to put it.
Okay, because that was, that was, that's a big thing.
Absolutely, because it could go right at the end of that building. This, this might bring it along. Okay, Ms. Grace?
No, I think you.
Commissioner Lenny?
I'm good. As you, uh, your EOC, the EOC that's set up with the sheriff's office, just a sub EOC, or is it just a alternate?
It's a al- alternate EOC.
Between now and next summer, if we get a, it is an alternate. We can move there.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So there's not a, um, we'd like to get that in running, but then we've got a brand new sheriff's office over there that's set up as an EOC. It's got all the capabilities, all the stuff. Okay, I just want to make sure.
We don't have a wall, we don't have a wall, yes, in other words.
Right.
Doesn't have a lot of, have phone lines or, has some, I'm not sure, but no radios, no, no, hopefully you have radios and dispatch, but not in EOC. That's our training room right now.
Basically, it's such a room about the size, yeah.
And I think that's why they made it the alternate, was if this building burns down and we have nowhere to go, we have.
Do you know the pitch you can, you guys please to go.
Right.
Okay.
And we're gonna have another, uh, ARP committee meeting immediately after this court meeting. For something you guys have that you want to write back to me, but it's, it's, it's. And, and I want to really praise the ARP committee, Mr. Lenny, the auditor, Chief Deputy, Grace. Uh, the type of work we're doing is, uh, awesome. They've shown up for every meeting, great ideas, there's a lot of good discussion, and I really appreciate all the work. And, 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 uh, and we did have a magic wand, and, uh, Merlin is coming. Merlin is coming.
Did, have y'all, have y'all talked about the hospitals?
Uh, we, we briefly discussed the hospitals and we keep coming back to county projects come first. Uh, I think that, and, and right now, we're only looking, we've got about a million six left out of the first two million. And we're trying to get these projects that the court's already approved going like the, uh, stuff or, uh, uh, the Skidmore before we obligate them. But the hospital will be on the list, but we haven't reached out yet.
Judge, I have a important number, the person from the, they said, they have a new G T that they would like to know on. They've been raising funds on the side, trying to get it, it was like two, four hundred thousand, but they've already raised part of it on this board. But to compete, or to compete with, it's, it's.
I, I was thinking more, uh, uh, hard asset maintenance. As far as the, uh, not, not equipment. I don't know if equipment qualifies.
Well, equipment, to be honest.
But like parking lot.
Yeah. Part of the equipment, you're not supposed to need that. Leasement. All they have to do is access it, we'll, okay, use a leasement on that. We've done that before.
Yeah.
Yeah, use a leasement.
For the piece of equipment, for sure.
Yeah.
It's the, the women are raising, it's a, the woman's image type deal. And they've, uh, I think it was priced at over forty thousand, and they've raised some money already for it, but they're trying to, put the raise a point.
Commissioner, money's there in that leasement to, to pull that out and get approved by the court to send.
I'll, I'll, I'll make you contact on that.
Please, yeah, I'll just work the agenda a little bit. Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Lenny, the rest of the committee, for all of y'all's efforts, on behalf of all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, sir. Anything further? All right, we'll move on to the final agenda item, agenda item number twenty-two, update discussion of possible action regarding B County COVID-nineteen status preparedness and contingency planning. Um, do we have?
I have some, uh, currently, we have thirty active cases that happened this morning, a hundred and forty-eight deaths that happened this morning.
There's no way to underscore the, the devastating nature of even one death as a result of this. And I prefaced the next comment by saying that, um, aside from that number, uh, thirty is great. And it seems like, uh, the most recent COVID storm has receded into our rearview mirror. So, uh, hopefully it will stay there and, uh, but I think we're all pretty resigned to the fact that it's gonna come back somehow, uh, at some point in time. And hopefully it will continue to be less of an impact on us, uh, than it was over the last three months. Thank you, Mr. Garza, uh, for that update. Is there any further discussion? Somebody wants to add anything to the agenda, just to spend a little bit more time here? All right, hearing that, we'll move on. Agenda item number twenty-three, adjourned.
Motion for adjourned again.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Now, for all your views, although it is favored, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, yes. See y'all in a few hours.